We'll call to order the meeting of July 14th, Regional Planning Commission to order, please. If y'all will stand with us, Commissioner Veronica Buchanan will lead us in our pledge and our prayer. Veronica?
Let us bow our heads. Gracious Father, we're thanking you for this day that you have bestowed upon us, dear God. We appreciate the rain because, Father, we sure need it, dear God. Father, we're asking you to cover our county with all your blessings and all your anointing, dear God, and keep our great leaders crowned with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Father, we're asking you to bless this meeting and give us the wisdom and knowledge to conduct your business, dear God. And, Father, again, thank you for the USA. This is my prayer in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call a roll, Gail.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Everwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Craig Lynch.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gail. We need to approve the minutes of our June 23rd meeting. I'll call on our vice chair, Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I have just a question. Would you approve the issue for the second?
Thank you. Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five. Any items deferred or withdrawn?
No, sir. Everything's still on.
Thank you, Doug. Item six, waiver request. Item 6A, Steve Prim is requesting a waiver to allow for an off-site soils area located on property located along East Prim Lane. The item number is 14-4007. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Prim Lane. You've got a copy of this handout here that's on the screen in your agenda materials as well. But essentially, what they're asking for is they're looking to divide, this is one piece of property right now, this is the existing house on the property where Mr. Prim lives. They're looking to subdivide the property in this manner right through here. Yeah, okay. Make sure that was up there. But by doing so, they're cutting off a small area, there's an existing soil site on the property that the existing house utilizes, but what they're going to do is transfer those soil lines to this new proposed site in this area here. What they will do is the new house that will be built on this lot will access this as their primary soils area, and then this area right back in here will be their backup area. There's another proposed soil area here, but this goes out into some proposed, well, actually some right-of-way that the county owns. There was a lot of discussion about the possibility of maybe abandoning this ultimately. Just to make a long story short, the Prims decided just to kind of stay away from that. But really, the only thing that they're really asking for, most of this soil area is on the proposed lot too, but you can see that there is a very small area right here that does encroach on this lot here. So really, what they're asking for is just an off-site soils waiver for the easement to access this portion of the soil area. Besides that, the rest of the plat appears to be in good order. Now, this is not the official submittal for the plat, that will still have to go through staff and also approved by the planning commission, just because it does require a waiver. Staff's not allowed to administratively approve that. But besides that, this is a dedicated right-of-way here. Most of this right to, I forget exactly how far, but a portion of this is in the city, right about to this area, I think, and then this is actually county. So this doesn't require any kind of easements as far as access is concerned, but just this small area right through here. So with that, the Prim, Mr. Prim is present. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Doug, could we not approve something tonight that would give staff the authority to approve the plat when it comes through?
I can check into that. I don't think so, but I can look into that.
The Prim family's owned this property for generations, you know, and he's trying to get his daughter a spot to build a house there, you know, and I would just like to make as easy as them as possible, and if anyway we could approve something as long as it met all staff comments or whatever, but if you don't think so...
With the approval of the easement, or if this is approved tonight, the easement for the off-site soils waiver, I mean, I can check as far as if that would constitute the approval that is needed through the planning commission if they have to approve the plat separately. Historically, we have not done that, but I'll check to see if that's a possibility.
As an developer, this is just somebody trying to get their daughter a house built on family property, and with that, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
A motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, submitted for final plat approval. Item 7A, Cascade Falls, Section 3, Phase 2. Item number is 14-2034. Fifty-three lots on 31.03 acres, zoned RM, located off of J.D. Todd Road. Michael A. Hollingshead is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along, this is Cascade Falls, located along the north side of J.D. Todd Road, northern end of the county. The preliminary plat for this particular section was approved by the planning commission back in July of 2006. This last phase, the last phase that was recorded was actually Section 3, Phase 1C, which was recorded back in April of last year. As you stated, this phase does contain 53 lots. The comments that we submitted to the design engineer have pretty much been addressed. There's just one thing I did want to bring to your attention. Staff, or the commission members may recall, especially those that have been here a little longer that know the history of this particular subdivision, when this subdivision was originally approved back in 2006, it was approved knowing that there was not adequate infrastructure out there for fire protection as far as the water lines are concerned. So the other sections all have residential sprinkler sections, sprinklered homes, excuse me, and this section would be the same, it'd be consistent with that. So if you do move to approve this, if you could just approve it's subject to the waiver of the fire hydrant requirements in lieu of that for the sprinkler systems, again, this is consistent with the other sections that were approved in this subdivision. Also, just one, a minor thing with this, it's still unresolved, there's something we looked at with the, there's a note on the plat, you can probably see it a little better on the handout that you have on your table as opposed to on the screen here, but the certificate on there for residential sprinkler systems that is signed, the way it's worded almost gives the impression that the accessory structures on the property are also required to be sprinkled. That's not what the intent is, that's not what we want. We just want to change the wording of that to state if there's any living area in those, not if it's just a garage and used for storage or something like that. But that's the intent of that, it just, you can, you could read it that way, but I think it'd just be better to clarify it a little bit. So we're just going to ask them to make that change, but besides that, the rest of the plat appears to be in good order.
Doug, we do, they do, in the water lines, put in a spot for a future fire hydrant, is that not correct?
If you look at the plat, there is actually fire hydrant locations located on that. My understanding, we're talking with the engineer, is that they were requested to be kept on there. Now, Ms. Wood from CUD is present, she may want to address that, but, because we had a question about that, like, well, if there's not going to be hydrants, why are they even shown on the plat? But they said, go ahead and leave the locations on there for if there's water line improvements in the future that some could be installed.
My memory that we had done that in the past, so let's...
I have a motion to approve.
Is that, is that subject to the fire hydrant waiver? Okay, thank you.
And a second, subject to, what did you say?
Well, just the, you could say, subject to staff comments and the fire hydrant waiver that was discussed.
Okay. Is that appropriate, Jim? Second? Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, we have two rezoning requests scheduled for public hearings. Item 8A, WR Thompson. The item number is 14-8008. The location is West Jefferson Pike. County commissioner is Jack Black, that's District Number 2. Size of site is approximately 19 acres. Tax map 36. Parcels 25.08 and 47.04. Existing zoning is RM. Proposed zoning is Commercial Services, CS. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, these properties are located along West Jefferson Pike. It was kind of strange this time that both rezonings we had were just a little bit apart on either side of 231 there on Jefferson Pike. But these are the properties in question that we have right here that we're discussing right now. Immediately to the east or southeast of these properties, you can see there's an existing mini-storage facility on the property. Phase 1 of that was approved back in 2010. Phase 2 was actually approved in May of last year, although they have not made any progress on that phase or taken out any permits to this point. The applicant's aware that if the properties are rezoned to Commercial Services, which is what this property here is on, the existing commercial stored, existing mini-warehouse storage units, if they are rezoned for that, the applicant would desire to place some additional mini-warehouse facilities on the property. They are aware that if that is the case, and this is zoned for Commercial Services, that they will have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception for that, which should be similar if this were ever to expand any further into the future beyond what they already have done. There is not really any kind of a concept plan right now. They're also looking at the possibility of maybe doing some retail in the future, but the one use that they did say that they would like to pursue would be mini-warehouse-type facilities. Access to this property would be from West Jefferson Pike, of course, any design would have to be done consistent with the zoning ordinance regulations. Also, it requires site plan approval, which would have to come back before you for approval as well. Beyond that, we did follow our notification protocol on this, put a sign on the property, and also took, well, took pictures I'll get to in a minute, but we also sent out our notices to properties within 500 feet. When I went out here to actually post the sign and take pictures, actually, the owner of the facility right to the southeast here actually came out and talked to me a little bit, had no issues with the application, actually thought it, you know, was actually kind of happy that there was someone who was looking to move forward with that property. But just to give you an idea of what the surrounding area looks like, this is looking down Jefferson Pike, just be looking to the west. Just be looking directly across the street. Just be looking back toward, you can kind of see in the distance there, the, distance there that there's the drive back in that area for the existing warehouse facility. Oops, wrong way. It's looking onto the property. The applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Doug, there's some mini warehouses that sit back off the road. Is this a joint, is this property?
Yes, sir. That's, if you look at the map on the screen, that's this right here, this existing mini-warehouse facility, and then these are the properties in two in red, these are the two properties in question.
I was thinking that was close, okay.
Yes, sir. It's right next door.
Both of those properties, I think, have been under, they've had a field going on there for years, if I remember right, hadn't they?
No.
Rock, rock and dirt, something like that. How about right-of-ways, Doug, as it relates to plans for Jefferson Pike?
Well, I don't think we have any real design on this particular section at this point, at least not that I've seen. Mr. Hill may want to contradict that if you've seen something. Something that we would probably require upon site plan review is some right-of-way dedication along here. Nothing at this point, but just as our typical practice is for developments along roadways that we know are identified.
I'm pretty sure we require the developer of the mini warehouses to dedicate some right-of-ways, so we just want to make sure we're consistent whether we do it now or at site plan, but I don't think we want to miss that opportunity when the time is appropriate.
And I think the appropriate time would be at site plan review.
If not, we're ready for a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open for WR Thompson, item number 14-8008. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Your pleasure.
Make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve and a second. Other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries. Thank you. Item 8B, Frank Bauer. The item number is 14-8009. Location 611 East Jefferson Pike. County commissioner is Jack Black, County Commission District 2. Size of the lot is approximately 18 acres. Tax map 46. Parcels 34.00 and 34.19. Existing zoning is RM. Proposed zoning is light industrial, LI. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along East Jefferson Pike. You can see the properties here on the map on your screen. Again, this is immediately adjacent as well to some existing self-storage facilities out in that area. The applicant is proposing to zone this property for speculative purposes. They're looking, he's looking to do a light industrial zoning classification as opposed to the last one, which was Commercial Services. There is no concept plan on this either, as again, they have not progressed to that point. Access to the property, of course, would be from East Jefferson Pike. Again, at this time, they would have to, since there's no concept plan, if they were to develop it, if the property is rezoned, they'd have to bring back a site plan for planning commission review. Light industrial does require a heavier screen against residential areas, which you can see to the north here, there's an existing church here right to the east. There are heavier buffering requirements, probably a type 3 buffer around here as opposed to a type 2. That being said, you can see the existing area around here, you have Commercial Services zoning immediately to the west, pretty much RM zoning around it, heavy industrial, this is the landfill right across the street, of course, you can see the ball fields right here, landfill road over in this area. When this application came in, I relayed to the applicant's representative, and the applicant and both him and the applicant's representative from Holston Steel are here today, that staff is kind of neutral about this particular application. I'd feel more comfortable personally if this were more of a Commercial Services-type zone, maybe than light industrial, although heavy industrial is located right across the street. Again, that is the landfill, that's really the only purpose of that particular zone is where the landfill is, that's going to be there for quite some time moving forward. You start moving here, you have a church, then you have a subdivision over here. I'm just a little concerned about some of the possible uses you could get with light industrial that maybe you wouldn't get with a lighter commercial zone. That's really up for the planning commission to discuss, the applicant has been made aware of that. With that, again, we did follow our notification protocol, we did put the sign out and mail out our notices within 500 feet. This is, we only received maybe a couple of phone calls about that, and that's when I first put the signs out. Beyond that, I didn't really get any other phone calls or input from the, from out in that area beyond that. And the phone calls that I did receive are really more informational, they weren't really opposed to what was being, opposed to what was being proposed here. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Doug, can you review us on what possibly could go into the light industrial use?
Yes, sir. The light industrial, of course, if you, when you look at your agenda materials, you know, it's, and I'll just read this straight from the purpose of the district, it's to provide space for a range of industrial and related uses that conform to high levels of performance standards and have the least objectionable characteristics. There, it says, require all operations in such establishments with the exception of limited outside storage be carried on within completely enclosed buildings, those kind of things. But when you look at just some of the uses, and I'm just going to look at the zoning ordinance here and the land use activity table that we have, some examples, the things that would be permitted in this zone that wouldn't be permitted in Commercial Services as an example necessarily, I mean, it's kind of a broad category when we talk about it, but it's anything that'd be considered a light industrial-type activity. Things like vehicular sales, craft sale, anything like that, car sales lots, things would be allowed in light industrial, wouldn't necessarily be allowed in Commercial Services. Just taking a look through what else we've got here. Really, any type of industrial activity would be allowed, light industrial activity would be allowed here as opposed to the Commercial Services zone, maybe like light manufacturing, distribution, those kind of uses. You'd see those kind of things more in a light industrial zone as opposed to a Commercial Services-type zone.
Well, a small distribution warehouse could be permitted there.
Possibly, yes, sir.
In the light industrial or in the...
In the light industrial, yes, sir.
Not in the CS?
Not in the CS, no, sir.
Like, Mr. Bauer's in the plumbing business, he's got a plumbing shop right across from there, kind of. Would it be allowed in the CS or would it have to be LI?
I believe so. That would probably be what we would call contractor sales and service, which would, I believe, yes, that would be permitted in Commercial Services as well, as well as light industrial.
Well, what about dirt extraction? What if they dug down to the...
They've been filling this lot for years, they're not going to dig it back up.
You know, I'm just, I'm just saying, light industrial, here's residential right beside it, you got heavy industrial right across the street, and then you got, well, the mini-storages are on the other side. So really, there's a plate of everything right there. So what do they want to do with it?
Well, he, like I said, this is really more for speculative purposes. The, I mean, the applicant's present, he may be able to give you better ideas to what he's looking at, but right now, he didn't give us any specific uses that they were...
Mr. Bauer owns the warehouses right beside it, he used to live right across the creek, I don't know if that still belonged to a family member or not, but, you know, it may be his own residential right beside, but there's no houses right beside it, there's no houses for quite a ways, there's that church two parcels over, but it's in a pretty commercial area right there. You know, the houses behind it, you know, there's a great big bunch of woods back there, it's across the creek, you know.
Two lots over there, so...
Actually, there's a lot in between, then there's a church, then it looks like there's another lot, and then there's a subdivision, so that's a good bit, I'm very familiar with this spot, there's a good bit of separation right there, in my opinion, but we can have a public hearing.
Other comments? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open on, for Frank Bauer, item number 14-8009. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request, please come forward. Is Mr. Bauer here? I would request that you come up, it appears that there are several questions for you, Thank you. Yeah, face, face the audience, and if you would, state your name and address, please.
My name is Frank Bauer, and I live at 5636 Lebanon Pike, Murphysboro.
Well, Mr. Bauer, I think the planning director there as well as planning commission here is wanting to make sure we get it right on what you're wanting to do. So what are you wanting to do?
Well, these are just thoughts, okay? As it's already been stated, I have the mini warehouses adjacent to it, so part of my thinking is to add on to the mini warehouses. Then we have a plumbing shop kind of across the street as a crow flies about 2,000 feet. With the booming economy that we presently have, it's, we're busting at the seams. So we're thinking, thinking of building a new shop over there at that property. Other than that, my, I personally wouldn't want any noisy or pollution-type businesses like auto body shops, fiberglass manufacturing shops, that type of thing I wouldn't want. Storage for who knows what, I just came from a Swanson warehouse that was loaded with electric cars, things like that, warehousing. I favor warehousing space because it's clean, it's neat, it's trouble-free somewhat, so I would like the opportunity to have warehousing space to rent out for storage of something. Manufacturing of anything big-time would not be of interest to me personally.
Well, we just didn't want you to have to come back and go to another committee and all that sort of stuff, trying to get your zoning down right to where you're done here, and then you can go do what you want to do.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my point, you know, so if you're coming up here to make an application, then we want you to make sure that's what you're wanting to do. Understandably, things change sometimes.
Right.
But take it through the route, and your neighbors know as well as, you know, the surrounding property owners, and then we get you into a zoning that you can use and that you, that you need and that you want.
I primarily would just like warehousing space for storage of things, whether it be plumbing pipes, electrical boxes, electric wire. Obviously, being in the construction trade, you know, I know electricians and I know AC people, and they've displayed an interest of having something in that area for an office warehouse-type thing. I, the two front lots, or the one front lot west, I have it set where you can have a loading dock there, so for those types of things, office warehouse, warehousing, nothing of a noise-making situation. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
Welcome.
Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We're open for business.
Well, Mr. Bauer's been in Walter Hill for probably around 30 years now, he's probably done more, put more investment in the Walter Hill community than anybody else I can think of. He's built, built his plumbing shop, he built the building where the lumber sales is out there just past the bridge and stuff, and he's done a lot to help Walter Hill. His daughter lives right across the road, just barely off that sign. I can't see him doing anything out there to be a detriment to the rest of his family's property, and he's been a good steward of the community and, personally, I don't know if we're supposed to treat different people differently, but I trust Mr. Bauer, he's got a good track record in Walter Hill, he's, he's never done anything that the neighbors out there have been upset about. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the light industrial, subject to all staff comments, except for the part about going back to CS, I think he'll do a good job for the community.
I have a motion to approve and a second, very well put, Commissioner Jordan. Any other comments or questions?
I have one question. Eric, is that, is that a creek in the back of that first property, that wavy line? Do you have any issues of industrial, light industrial?
Nothing that we couldn't...
Polluter of any kind?
Take care of it on the site plan.
Other questions? We have a motion to approve. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries. Thank you. Item number 8C, zoning ordinance amendments. The item is 14-5002 regarding outdoor entertainment and amusements. It's the planning staff is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commission members will recall that we've discussed these amendments for outdoor entertainment and amusement services at a couple of different planning commission meetings, April 28th and May 27th. The reason we brought these up, as you recall, is currently the way that it's classified in the ordinance now, it's just entertainment and amusement services, everything's kind of lumped into one category, and it's really only allowed in the commercial zones and maybe even some of the industrial zones. There are some uses such as paintball fields, even though shooting ranges, we'll be getting to that as we go on, but that's not necessarily included in this, but those kind of uses that really lend themselves to more rural areas, larger tracks, but staff doesn't feel comfortable necessarily recommending that they be zoned commercial. You'd have like maybe a 50, 60-acre tract out in the middle of the rural area zoned commercial. Staff was concerned that that didn't really meet the intent of the comprehensive plan nor that it meet the intent of the zoning ordinance as we had envisioned it. So what we had proposed at that time was kind of splitting up the categories into indoor versus outdoor. You'll notice in your agenda materials that we have, we added some general standards for outdoor entertainment and amusement services, basically being a minimum lot size of five acres, allowing accessory uses such as snack bars, office, maintenance facilities, those kind of things. Site plan approval would be required consistent with the ordinance in Section 1404. The uses shall abide by the parking requirements, also the landscaping and buffering and performance standards. And we also put a, kind of a catch-all in there, you will, as far as regulations are concerned, that all regulations that would be enforced through other agencies, such as the federal, state, other local guidelines, would have to be met. Again, that goes back to just because they get zoning approval doesn't mean that they necessarily can be free to do whatever they want to do from there. They'd have to get whatever federal, state, and local permits would be required in addition to that. The remaining amendments that you have in your agenda materials tonight, one of them is the Appendix B Land Use Activity Table. You'll recall when we originally talked about this, we were originally just looking at it in the AR and maybe the RL zone, but after discussion, we went kind of the other extreme with it. We just said, allow it by special exception in all the different zoning classifications, which I think ultimately is probably better than what staff had originally proposed, so we were glad to make that change. You'll also see in our land use index an Appendix C, and that's really a majority of, at least the next page or so, just how we're adding some categories. Ball fields, we're changing that from, I think we changed that, actually, we deleted play fields, which is really what that was referring to, and called them ball fields. Remote-controlled vehicle fields such as airplanes, RV cars, those kind of things. Sport tracks like motocross, mud bogzo-type things. We amended several of the existing entertainment amusement activities... We amended several of the existing entertainment amusement activities, just to clarify if they were indoor versus outdoor. And then we deleted a couple that were in there. One of them was just a, was kind of, was redundant amusement arcades and then again, play fields, we changed that to ball fields. We've also added some off-street parking requirements, as you see, for ball fields, it's 10 for every acre of land plus one for every four spectator seats or one for every eight linear feet of bleacher seats, whichever is greater. And then we went back and kind of clarified some of the, the use that we wanted in the rest of the zoning ordinance and use classifications you can see under community assembly. There was some question at the planning commission, if you recall, about accessory uses for fellowship halls and recreational facilities at churches, whether or not they were going to have to come back before the board to request zoning for those type of things. But we included in there under community assembly activities that they could do fellowship halls, recreational activities and those type of things without having to go necessarily back to the board of zoning appeals. Also, under chapter four and the remainder, this is pretty much a, the same language you used throughout. You can see under chapter four residential districts, recreation facilities, that's existing, exclusive for the use of the residents, but we clarified that to include subdivision amenities such as clubhouses, pools, tennis courts, again, to ensure that in those situations that we were not requiring them to come back to the board of zoning appeals for something that we never intended them to come back for. And then in the office, professional zone, commercial district, industrial and then special character areas, you can see we clarified that language as well. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I think these changes reflect the discussion that we had. If there's something that's missing, please let me know. But beyond that, I think these regulations are good to go forward with a public hearing tonight and then to the board of commissioners next month. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
In the beginning of your conversation there, you talked about paintball shooting ranges addressed at a later, or a different spot.
Really, the, well, it's really more the, the shooting ranges. We, when we first started looking at this, we were going to send regulations specific for shooting ranges through. However, we're still working through those. We wanted to at least get this through. Kind of what I envisioned is bringing that back through and then kind of making that a subset of outdoor commercial activity. But those are a little bit different when it comes to some of the, the issues involved, you know, the precautions that have to be taken for that. So we want to spend a little more time studying.
We are going to address those, just not at this time.
Correct, yes. Perfect.
Questions for staff?
Everybody that's in there now has grandfathered in then.
That's correct.
So this would be new applicants.
That's correct.
Would have to comply with.
Yes, sir.
We need to conduct our public hearing. At this time, we'll conduct a public hearing. I declare the public hearing open for zoning ordinance amendments, item number 14-5002. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward. Robert, you got anything?
Okay.
Okay. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We're open for business.
I heard him mention shooting ranges, I heard him mention mud bogs and both of those probably upset somebody out there, but besides that, if we're going to take care of the shooting ranges as time goes forward and we'll deal with mud bogs on a case-by-case basis, I guess, but.
Yeah, those will have to go to the board of zoning appeals. It's, anything here would have to go to the BZA.
Besides that, I'll make a motion to approve this, subject to all staff comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. And a second, we have a, a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Item number nine is staff reports. Before we get into that, I'll remind you, our next scheduled meeting is Monday, July 28th, 9:00 AM in the planning department. Let me also just kind of say, if you guys have noticed over the last couple of years, we keep talking about BZA a lot more than we ever have before. And since we've instituted our new subdivision regs in our comprehensive plan, the BZA is, is an important extension of the planning department and county government. And if you see any of those, the members of that commission and that board, if you would commend them for the work that they're doing, sometimes their agenda is as lengthy as a little phone book. So they're, they're performing a, a very valuable task and they're to be encouraged and commended for doing that.
Absolutely.
That's the ninth office meeting on July 28th.
9:00, 9:00 AM, July 28th in the planning office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really just have one brief report. On your tables today, you'll see a draft of an official policy statement that staff has been working on. We're going to get more detailed into this at our next day meeting, so I don't, I'm not planning on spending just a whole lot of time talking about this. But at our last day meeting, you know, we had a training session after the regular meeting was concluded regarding the new fire code and everything. Since that time, we've had meetings with the fire chief and Mayor Burgess, myself, Mr. Hill, and we've discussed some of the issues surrounding that. There are going to be some changes coming to that even beyond the discussion that we had at our last meeting. One of the things that we did talk about however, was the, and I know we've mentioned this here before, but this gives you kind of an idea where we're going with this, with the measurement of 1,000 foot for fire hydrants, whether it be as the crow flies versus as a truck drives. This, again, this will kind of show you the direction the staff is going in at this point. We're going to have more comments about this again at the next meeting, but I wanted to get this to you just so you would have an idea of what's going to be discussed. Also, we've been working on our amendments to the subdivision regulations in regards to that. Really, what you're going to see regarding fire hydrant waivers and those kind of things is really not a whole lot of change versus what we currently, currently do. We are going to bring a lot of housekeeping amendments forward to you. We're hoping to have that document completed here. We've already advertised it because we have to advertise a 30-day notice for that. So that'll be the public hearing that you'll have at our next, in our August night meeting, which I believe is 11th, I can't swear to that, but I think that's right. At this point, we don't have any other rezoning applications. That looks like it'll be the only item of business that night. Our deadline for rezonings passed, this past Friday, and I haven't had anybody just knocking on my door asking for any other zoning cases. So I think that'll be the only item that we'll be discussing. But what I'm planning on doing is we'll have a, again, we'll put this draft on the SharePoint site and we'll send you an email regarding that as well as the draft amendments. Again, a lot of it's going to be housekeeping and just clarifying a few things, but I just wanted to let you know that, you know, working with the fire chief and others, that again, the, the changes that we talked about at our last training session are, are really, we're going to have changes even beyond that. So what we talked about there, again, it's really going to be more business as we currently conduct it. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and I guess to stay tuned for some more detail on that. Also, we're very excited to have coming at our next meeting for, again, another training session. Again, this is all good training that you can all use for your public chapter 862 requirements. Most of you've actually have already met that, but this will be a good discussion. We've got Mr. Mike Madison, who's the planning director for Williamson County coming down, along with Steve Talknell with Talknell Planning Services. In Williamson County, they use a technique called traffic sheds that essentially for, and I'm, this is a very simplistic way to explain it, but based on the condition of the road and the amount of land you have, it basically says you can have X amount of more trips on this road. And that's something that they've employed in Williamson County for quite some time and recently just updated, I think within the last few years, they updated the, the process that went into that. Something that I think you'd be interested in, whether or not we pursue it or not, it's really going to be up to you, but I think it'd be something just worth listening to if nothing else. So we're happy that they're going to be coming at the day meeting here in just a couple of weeks and they're looking forward to the presentation as well. That's all I have. I'm not sure if Eric, if you had anything you wanted to share.
Yeah, question.
Sir, ma'am.
Are we having a workshop on August 28th?
August the, I'm sorry, the, say that again?
I was saying August 28th, I'm having a workshop.
Oh, you're talking about the, the conference. Okay, there is a, yes, there is a, something that we'll have a little more information for you at the next meeting. The Tennessee American Planning Association, which we're members of here as staff, every year they have a conference. This year, it's in Nashville and we're planning on putting together a planning commission training seminar. Bill Terry will be there, Bridget Jones from Cumberland Region tomorrow, kind of giving a overview of regional planning efforts and then Bill Terry would do more of your local planning regulations and things like that. We're going to kind of tailor that to planning commissioners and hope that, that we get a good response. So if any of you would be interested in that, we've got money in our budget to, to take care of that. So yeah, but that would be Thursday afternoon. I think it'd be about 1:30 to however long it lasts, three or four hours, just depending on, on how long it. I'm, I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow to kind of shore up the presentation, so.
Will you mention this?
Yes, sir. I will.
Follow up with the new, updated fire regulations. We'll probably discuss this in a little bit more detail on the 28th.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll schedule to conduct a public hearing on those items later on.
In August, yes, sir, in August. No, sir, until I got?
Anything else? Thank you, Commissioners, we're adjourned.